Mike, good evening council members. Tim Allen, Finance Director. So Mike's talking about where do we need to go with streets? And why are we talking about repairing or rehabilitating those? But then the big question becomes, how do we pay for that? And with levy limit restrictions, our options are kind of limited. Some of the options that we may be used to have in the past, we don't have today. But we do have some options, and those include appropriation. This is a pay-as-you-go program. It's similar to, what you do with this is you pay now and you use it later. It's similar to buying a car with cash. You buy it now and then you're going to use it for several years. That's what the appropriation method is. But it is restricted by levy limits. Our levy limit increased this year for the foreseeable future. There's no increase to levies except for net new construction, which right now is in that $260,000 a year. And $260,000 a year, like Mike said, won't give us a lot of payments, and that does not allow us to allow for inflation in other areas of the city. And also, we do need to get voter approval to exceed our levy limits. The benefit of appropriations though is we do avoid debt issuance costs and interest. So it is a cheaper option than borrowing money. Again, we're restricted and have to go to the voters' side now. The next option is borrowing. This is just like financing your car. It's in your bank. You're going to pay some interest and maybe some closing costs. So it does get to be more costly, but in the shorter term, it does keep a little bit more affordable. Because that service that we pay as the city, we're not paying for everything all today. So we have an increased cost today, and then we do the extra borrowing next year, extra borrowing the next year, extra borrowing the next year. So it ramps up until we get to that full program and it's that 10-year cycle of borrowing.
Isn't the disadvantage to that the same argument that we listened to during the state budget debate? At some particular point in time, the state of Wisconsin is paying 20, getting close to 20% of the dollars that they have appropriated for transportation projects is going to get serviced?
Well, definitely. If you borrow everything, you definitely get into that situation where you're borrowing everything, you're paying a lot more interest and debt issuance costs. So yeah, part of what you're paying then is...
You get to a breaking point where you're doing more debt service than you are natural construction?
You could, yep. We don't want to get to that point. I think I saw a hand here first.
Okay. With the borrowing though, I know we can't raise, as a council, we can't raise the tax levy limit for general appropriation, but when it comes to borrowing, there is a debt levy, if I'm correct? So actually, property taxes could go up to pay for the borrowing. Is that correct?
Right. The levy limit restrictions do not stop us from borrowing. So anything that we borrow, theoretically, we have no limit there. So the council can approve borrowing. We can all increase the levy for that. However, then it gets to that point where you borrow everything. You're paying a debt service and not paying for what you're actually trying to pay for. So we do have the option to increase that.
Okay.
And over here?
When we borrow, how long does it take usually to pay off? Whatever we borrow this year, how many years will it take to pay that off?
The city of Janesville has always been very conservative, and we borrow for a 10-year program.
Okay. So the streets will last longer than the money we borrow?
Right.
The cost of...
Correct. Some cities will borrow over 20 years. Janesville has not. We've always been conservative. That helps us in two ways. That helps us with our credit rating, helps keep our interest costs lower. And then you're always, then you never get upside down, where you're still paying for something that may be lost its value or...
Or out.
Or wrong. Yes?
I don't know if this was just something I heard passing, but I also, I don't remember Jaywin Zen saying that if we borrow more over 10, if we, if we take out a bond over 10 years, like 15 or 20, if that would have to go to a referendum? I don't know if that's correct.
That doesn't...
Would, to presume that that's going to be accounted by council policy is a choice?
Yeah.
The referendum is, it's by statute, Wisconsin statute, if I mean. 10-year borrowing is on a note, and it's not subject to public referendum to overturn that council decision. Anything that's a bond has to be a minimum of 20 years. Could be a little higher, 25 and 30 are also available. But any kind of bond is subject 20 years or above to referendum of the people based on the number of signatures they would get.
So anything over that, people could petition the city and then go to referendum to stop it? Or overturn? Okay, that's what it was. Thank you.
Another option is special assessments. This is a, like a user fee. And what does it, it shifts the cost to the property owners whose streets are resurfaced first. So if your street is resurfaced first, you're happy that it's done, but now you're paying more for it today. And someone else whose street isn't resurfaced yet, isn't paying that. It's very, very similar to the sidewalk program. And the people who benefit may not be the ones who are paying for it. Because if my street is done, but other people are driving on it, if they don't live there, they might get the benefit, but they're not sharing that cost.
Do we do special, I know we do special assessments on sidewalks. Do you do special assessments on curb and gutter?
No. No. Special assessments do impact exempt organizations, such as churches and other nonprofits. I mentioned that this special assessment's been done for sidewalks, but they've never been used in Janesville for streets. Doesn't even mean can't, it just never has been done. Another option is the wheel tax. This is a user fee which impacts, everybody has a vehicle or multiple vehicles. It would also impact those exempt organizations, such as the churches and other nonprofits also, just like special assessments would. This does mean that those who use the streets are also paying for the rehabilitations, that money that we bring in helps pay for some of the street program. So if people have more cars using them, wearing out the streets more, they're helping pay for that.
It hits churches and nonprofits if they own vehicles?
If they own vehicles.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. If they don't have a vehicle, there's no impact for them.
Okay.
Yep. And we do currently have a wheel tax. This is currently $10. Janesville, one of the earlier adopters of the wheel tax. But there are many more communities around the state that are looking at implementing this or have already done so. And the city manager's office is getting calls routinely asking why we did it, how do you implement it, what kind of dollars are we getting? So there are many more cities that are going to be putting this in place.
Tim, this is a question I, Jaywin Zen, a few years ago, is, I asked, is there any chance of a wheel tax that the Department of Transportation can tell us who has truck, heavy-duty trucks, SUVs, et cetera? We thought that was totally impossible. I find it a little hard to believe because people with heavy trucks are beating the hell out of our roads and doing the same as the guy with the Prius. I mean, there's no way that they could differentiate anything for us, is that...
We can ask them for the information. I don't know how...
I know that could be complicated, but if I have a truck that weighs three times as much as a Prius, I think I should pay them.
Right. The state does, when they send us a payment, obviously it will say how many vehicles are on there, here's our $10 plus their processing fee.
But they don't have classes of vehicles.
But they don't give us information by class or weight or something like that. It's just number of vehicles.
Well, and depending what the truck is doing, if it's delivering merchandise or whatever here in town, it may just increase their delivery fees if they have to pay, which is ultimately going to get to the resident anyway.
Right.
Well, the heaviest trucks probably aren't even licensed in Janesville.
Right.
They're coming from who knows where.
Yeah, Jim, I think under the state constitution, when it comes to a tax or a fee, that I think it's unconstitutional to pick and choose. Yeah. That you have to tax everyone equally. My understanding anyways, but I think it's a great idea. I think you should get a discount if you drive a Prius.
Can the municipality have a call?
If you go ask that, I think the answer is no. But yeah, that's one way to try to get other people who are coming into town, whether it's holiday shoppers or whoever, to try and help pay for the streets that they're using. But that's one of those options that's been taken away from cities to put in place. And another option is using fund balance. This is just like spending your savings. You take money out of your savings account, you pay for the car or refrigerator or whatever this, that money's gone, so you don't have it there to continually use that. So it can be a short-term fix, but you can't support a multi-year program just spending on saving because you eventually run out of that. And you don't have that free day fund, the proposal policy that we keep running in the bank for those what-ifs. What if the river floods and we have to pay those costs before the feds reimburse us? What if salt prices go up this year? What if there's more snowfall? What if some of those other things? We keep those reserves, these payments, and you hear it till here, and it's gone.
The county has a half a percent sales tax. It's been in place now for a few years. Is a local option sales tax something that's available to the municipality?
Definitely.
No.
No?
State?
Yeah, the answer is no currently. It was discussed during this budget cycle, you know, should we entertain that? I think it's something that we could take on over these next couple of years through the legal Wisconsin municipalities, that that's something, because that's something that they support. And that we should consider that as a, as a way to gain additional revenue if we want to go down that path. But certainly something in these next two years before the next budget cycle.
Thank you.
And then something, you know, other states, I talked to people in other states that have that option. It's a great fundraiser. You tax people that are coming into town to shop or eat or whatever, and they're the ones using the streets. But yeah, then we ask ourselves, and we say, no, there's an option that may be who you said that's taken away. Yes?
I know it was talked about, and I don't see it in the presentation, but was there any more research done into the creating the enterprise zone? Like the sanitation fund or water department where on people's quarterly bill, you know, just being, you know, 10 bucks a quarter is a transportation fund, and then that money would be then put up purely for, for roads? Was that ever looked into?
We've talked about that somewhat internally, but that's not something that can be installed and put in place overnight. So as we look at how do we pay for the roads in the next year or two, not something we could up and running that fast. So that's an option we've looked at for the shorter term, something we can't look at for the longer term.
Is it even a legal option for us to do that?
Yes, that's legal. Thank you. Yep. Another downside of using the fund balance, as we said, it's not, it's not there forever. You spend your savings, it's gone pretty quickly. Another downside of that is if we were to use that option, that would also affect our credit rating for the money that we do borrow. Standard poor's, mortgages like to see that we've got some savings to back ourselves up in case we need it. If we don't have that, then our credit rating drops, our interest rates increase.
Do we have any cushion on that? I mean, if we take a million dollars out of fund balance, does that automatically change our credit rating? Or is there some...
There's a range there.
Yeah.
The standard poor's, we've used like several years for our rating. They do kind of look at a range of that. They don't tell us exactly where we have to be, but they give us a range, and we're within that. But as we look out the next year, we're going to use some fund balance for the fire station. That's been in the works for a few years, part of the program there. So with that, that leaves us much less.
That would definitely lower the credit rating now.
That shouldn't dramatically affect us, but if we did that and...
No, I'm saying if you do that and the roads...
And the roads, yes, that definitely would. All right. So Mike touched on, or Tim touched on what was done a year ago. I'll just kind of bring that up, you know? As the council gave us the direction last year to pursue a program that covers the 12 miles a year so we can stop that way and level things off for what the pace of ratings are. The direction that we were given a year ago was to, of the million, two, or sorry, of the $2 million that we needed to spend to raise up to the 12 miles per year. We were supposed to borrow 40% of that, or $800,000 a year. This year's part of our borrowing package that just went finalized in the last few weeks, we did borrow that $800,000. And we have that in our capital plan, a borrowing plan ongoing, that we'll continue to borrow that. The other 60% was supposed to, was supposed to come from the appropriation that did go to the voters through a referendum for the million two. That referendum did not pass. So we have to find a way, how do we fund that extra 1.2 million that we're not giving that way? How do we suggest doing that? What we're recommending is that on the borrowing side, we're currently borrowing the million 750, which is the prior $950,000 plus the $800,000 extra. We're proposing that we'll borrow an extra $676,000 per year as part of that, make up that 1.2 million dollars, and increase the wheel tax from $10 vehicle up to $20 per vehicle. And then the wheel tax we bring in, and then extra $535,000. So the 676 to the 535 is what we're proposing to cover that 1.2. It gets us up to the 12 miles per year. We mentioned earlier that the borrowing ramps up in year one. As we borrow the 676 for the first year's program, that adds $200, or sorry, $2.30 to the average homeowner or taxpayer, and then ramps up.
Say that again, please.
If we borrow $676,000 in year one, that will add $2.30 to the average taxpayer.
$2.30 or $23.
$2.30 in year one. But then year two, as we borrow another $676,000, that adds another $2.30.
So that's a 10-year...
So that over a 10-year program, if you're always doing this, always maintaining 12 miles, it ramps up to that $23 per average taxpayer. So that's what we like to present as what's that sustained effect on a taxpayer, rather than just in year one.
Tim, are you saying level 23 years, that the increase every year stays the same? Am I misreading this? For every year, it's going to go up, down a mile because of the most...
Over that 10-year cycle, it ramps up where it affects the taxpayer by $23 per year. So it's $2 and then it becomes $2.30, it's 460, 690, up to 23. And then from there, it would become inflation or borrowing costs.
Is that what you're going to do in the long term, should I pay for it for 10 miles?
So 10 years from now, it would affect the average taxpayer $23 per year. And then you maintain that debt.
This is borrowed a lot, yeah. Each year you build up, and then eventually...
Then on the wheel tax, I think, we said...
You start paying off this debt.
That would increase tax per vehicle by $10. The average homeowner in town, or business person has 2.2 vehicles, so that would add $22 on the average to a taxpayer. So if we take the $22 longer-term cost plus the $22 over year, that would, on average, be a $45 per year impact.
Tim, I don't know if you're the person to answer this question, but when the $2.30 is for the average taxpayer, how are property taxes assessed? I'm not exactly, let me just think out loud for a minute. If you've got a $50,000 home, and you've got a $400,000 home, do they hit, they get hit with the same amount? No, because there's an average.
Right.
Okay. Is there any banding in property taxes in Janesville?
No.
No?
Nope, it's strictly linear. When we say an average, typically we put aside, sorry, to, I'll say numbers, the average home in Janesville is $120,000. So if your home is double that, your taxes are going to be doubled. The $23 would be doubled. The wheel tax wouldn't necessarily be...
Not be effective.
If your home is half of that $120, your, your half of the $23.
Okay. Okay.
One thing to note on the wheel tax, if you want to change that, as we're proposing, the state does require 90 days notice. When the wheel tax was implemented here, we, when we gave, or told them we were putting that in place, says, okay, it's going to take us 90 days to get our system in place, so we didn't see collections from 90 days.
Is that true even when they are currently collecting wheel tax?
Yeah. Yep. So if we're going to go this route, if we want a full year of tax of that in 2016, back the 90 days up, we should be telling them soon enough here that that's our intent.
And as I recall from your presentation, we're on the current 10 bucks, we're only getting, what, $9.80? Or $9.90 because of their...
We're getting the $9.90.
Yeah.
Because the state takes 10 cents on every...
Takes a skim.
Registration that they process. The good news would be is if we raise it to 20, they're still only going to take their 10 cents. So then we see the full impact of this extra 10.
Thank you.
Not that that's a huge amount, but it's some consolation.
Sure, sure.
This proposal doesn't go back to possibility of the referendum at all?
Right. We're not recommending that at this time. Something that we presented earlier this year, if we want to do a referendum this year yet, in November, it'd become a special election that would have a cost of, because in that $30 to $50 range...
Oh, okay, because there's no election this year.
Right. So we have that, a special election with an extra cost to us. And then if that passes, great. If not, then we're back in the spot that we're in today. And to do that, we'd have to be out in front of that by, I think it's 70, 75 days. So we'd have to be getting that point today.
So if the following year, we wanted to try that again, then we'd have to start thinking about it the first of the year?
I would.
Right. Yeah. So some council members had suggested previously that maybe we'd give that referendum out there every two years.
Hopefully enough time has passed after the last one.
Right. Yeah, and where it fails, that's going to be accounted. Yes, there are some people that voted for it, or some people have voted no. There are some people, the wording of the referendum question is horrible, but it's mandated by the state, and we follow that.
Hopefully, we learn each time how to, what didn't work too well.
Right. So if we go with, if the council approves the recommendation to borrow the extra 676 and then raise the wheel tax by the $10 per vehicle. On Hen Streets program, we've got summary of the sources and uses of the funds. Currently at nine miles a year, they caught, we're bringing in $4.2 million to spend, $4.2 million. As Mike said, there's paving, there's curb and gutter, there's the sidewalk that goes along with that. As we go up to the 12 miles, I'm sorry. This would all cover the 12 miles. The top part of $4.2 million is the impact on the general fund side of things, where we've got the state aid, the wheel tax at the higher, the double amount, and the borrowing at the increased rate with the extra 676 in there. And then uses cover the paving, curb and gutter, and the sidewalk. As Mike mentioned, as we're out there assessing the streets, tearing them up to resurface some, re-mold, relay the surface, the water, wastewater, stormwater departments are also out there checking the condition of the piping underneath. If it needs to be replaced or repaired, they're doing that work also.
Makes sense.
Yes.
Would the, I don't know if I speak for Mike, would the increase of nine to 12 miles then put an extra strain on water, wastewater, stormwater? Or would those rates have to go up to keep up with the expanded mileage?
Would it put a strain on it? I don't think so. We've been ramping up for the last few years now. Would rate increases have to occur? I think, yes, that would follow. Logically, I think that would follow. We're going to do more work, we need a little more revenue. But at the same time, we're including the overall condition of those utility systems and hopefully preventing the, you know, the major failures that are very, very expensive. So if we time that with fixing of the pavement and the curb and gutter, that's a more cost-effective way to manage underground utility systems.
Okay. And with the council direction last year to go up to 12 miles, we were ramping up to that. So the water is already, are, essentially running at those pace today. So they are doing that. And as part of the 2015 budget, we did put in place a simplified rate increase on the water and wastewater side. So there was that inflationary fee increase that is covered to those extra costs to cover that ramp up. And we foresee continuing that simplified rate increase in the water, wastewater area to cover those costs.
Tim, what is the cost of borrowing? Is that, I know it's been very low in store, I mean, I believe, I mean, what does it add now? About 2, something percent more?
Right. With this year's note issue that just closed a few weeks ago, and the council approved that for the capital plan, our interest rate was 2.01%. Last year was 1.9 and change. So we're fortunate to have that conservative management here, and we're continuing that. So we'll, we'll see continued lower interest rates with that.
One reason I asked Mike if we could up it to the 14 to 15 miles, which it doesn't sound like it would work, is I think we've got a strange and unique opportunity in front of us right now with the low interest rates. And since they're delaying the interstate side check, there's a good chance that Rock River will be having some capacity opportunities right now, since they won't be working on the interstate when they're on. The interstate will be competing against them. And Sam, you might want to leave the room for this one, but if I read the paper correctly, the prevailing wage on construction projects is also something that may make our costs favorable for that. We just don't know yet how that's going to shake out. But, you know, between those three items, this is a really great opportunity for Janesville. Plus, we've also got our fifth year of our sidewalk plan out of there. So we're just doing, I'm assuming that's replacement of banned sidewalks in here. It's not like we had before, where we were doing a mile or three miles of sidewalks every year. So we've got that out of there. So on the short term, I think we're, we're pretty good. And I don't have a huge problem with, with your analogy on the short term of the borrowing and as much as I don't like it, the wheel tags. But I think in the long run, when we, especially when we start seeing the interest rates start to creep, I think that's the time that we need to get serious on the referendum and/or the enterprise zone. And one reason that I would probably reluctantly support a wheel tax right now is the fact that we could dangle that as something that we would cut back on if, if we put a referendum in place, i.e., we do a referendum for what we need it, and we would reduce the wheel tax. But the catch on that is, like somebody says, you never drop a tax. Once you got the money coming in, you kind of get addicted to it. It's hard to go backwards on it. And that would be my big reluctance on that. But, you know, do a, do a referendum in 2017 and, and see what the tone of the city is at that time. And give them the, then show them what we just did here with the, the borrowing is costing them more money. And maybe at that time, cooler heads will prevail, and they'll see that in their long-term interest to referendum is the way to go. Or the enterprise zone, if we can get geared up for that, present both of them, and then give people an option at that time for a long-term answer. But I think in the short term, we need to get to the 12 miles and start doing that, especially since we've got some capacity, I'm assuming, capacity issues in the low rates. That's what I would say. I also said we have to work with the legislator and see if we can word a referendum so walls can salute it. And that might be a, that might be a state issue. And that might be a, that might be a state issue that we have to work with, so, and that might take a couple of years to, to come up with, so, that's my two cents.
My short-term perspective is the fact that I don't think we're ready to give back for referendum at this point in time at all. Uh, I think that that's two years or a little more out before we're going to be able to do anything in that particular arena. Um, I like Doug, really don't like the wheel tax, but, you know, um, it's, given of all the options we have, it's probably one of the better ones that, uh, at least captures the, uh, the vehicle traffic of individuals that live with, that live within the city of Janesville. Unfortunately, it doesn't pick up everybody that travels through here. Uh, and, and as much as I agree about the potential of a, a thorough at some point in time focusing only on the individuals from Illinois. Uh, that is not going to be a reality for a long, long time. Um, borrowing, um, you know, is the only, without going into, um, our reserves. And, and knowing the limitations we have on, on, on operating, uh, borrowing would make sense. And, and right now the climate is good for borrowing. Um, I don't know if there would be a rate differential, uh, going fifteen years as opposed to ten. Uh, and, and I, I'm not, I'm not doing that in my head, it may not be an option at all, but, uh, I know this is, we, we're conservatives staying with it, with ten-year notes and, and there's nothing wrong with that. My inclination is I could reluctantly support those great recommendations. Uh, and, and my only reluctance is I wish we had more options than what we have. Uh, I know that, you know, counties have been successful with local option sales tax. Uh, Rock County in particular has done exceedingly well with their local option sales tax, as have most other counties in the state. I, I know that we would give support from the league of municipalities, but I also, from a realistic viewpoint, that, uh, the average piece of legislation would, through the state of Wisconsin, from idea inception to passage is roughly six years. Um, and that's a long time and, and a lot of hassle in the process. Um, but I, I'm inclined to support the recommendation.
Yeah, and we tried to balance it, to say, if we do the wheel tax, that helps keep down the borrowing cost. That's an option, we could take that up to thirty.
Yeah, I kind of swallowed that.
But I don't think we were ready for that.
I think, you know, like, a fifty percent increase is not.
That's a hundred.
You are a hundred percent increase, you're right. That's why I'm not a finance person.
Right. Other questions?
Do you want input at this point or?